Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. So I quickly perused the request to speak. We have about 25. And I think the way that we're going to handle is everyone can have up to two minutes. No one is required to take the full two minutes. And if you can make a new point, that's great. We had lots of people take advantage of the public comment who said they couldn't attend the hearing. I'm sure the other board members read those. Those were all forwarded to us by our communications director, Tracy Habichaline. And in addition, people are always welcome to also send emails. So having already read a couple dozen of the emails and comments, we'll now open up public hearing and just would ask that folks refrain from making noise or commenting or applauding speakers while they're speaking. And if we can just treat everyone as you would want to be treated, we'll be good to go. All right. First up, we have Michelle Hendricks from Ward Avenue in Hudson.
Hello. Hopefully I can get this through in two minutes. First, I just wanted to say thank you for giving us the opportunity for public comment. And I also wanted to thank you for choosing to get our children back to normal life. And thank you for not requiring masks. I did see that the mask requirement is subject to change and wanted to touch on that briefly. Couple of things that I wanted to point out that have been actively ignored by the media and many politicians. So masks that are N95 or better and properly fitted do work. But the fabric masks that you buy from the store literally do nothing to protect anyone. If you can see the holes in the fabric, the mask, but you can't see the virus. Sorry. So if the virus is smaller than the holes in the fabric that we can see, then how is the mask protecting us? It doesn't take a scientist to know that something smaller can go through a hole that's bigger than itself. If fabric masks work so well, why has it taken us to the year 2020 to figure out that essentially pulling your shirt over your face would have saved us from thousands of years of disease and plagues? In countries where women wear burkas, do they have significantly lower rate of viral disease transmission? I implore you to not require masks for our children as things change throughout the year. Not only ridiculous when logic is applied, but it only has negative effects. My child's five and a half years old. And children at a young age need to see people's faces. They need to see how people talk to help develop their language skills. They need to see people's expressions as they learn how to read body language, interpret, and interpret others' feelings. They need to see people's faces to capture and maintain their attention. They need to hear people's voices, not muffled through a piece of fabric. Young children were dealt a significant blow in learning when the schools went remote. Last I checked, not every household has the luxury of one parent to stay at home with their kid all day long. This path not only actively discriminated against certain groups of children, but left others completely in the dust. My child was one of those. He was receiving speech, occupational, and physical therapy through special education. When the schools stopped having in-person learning, he literally had nothing. When he was not receiving these services while other children were, this violated the Americans with Disabilities Act. Luckily, this last year, we were able to get in person for the most part. But with the mask requirement, it continues to damper his ability to learn. With having a severe speech delay, the type of speech therapy recommended involves someone seeing, him seeing someone's face and having a speech therapist touch his face to help him make sounds. Needless to say, he made very little, if any, progress in speech department over the last year. I'm almost done.
Well, if you could, if you've ended your point, I appreciate it. I just, if I let everybody go one minute over.
Oh, yeah. No, that's fine. That was pretty much my point. Thank you for getting back to normal. I appreciate it.
All right. Next up, we have Stephanie Ostigian. And I hope I, maybe I missed a couple syllables there. I'm sorry, Stephanie, but you're on Waldorf Farm Road.
Correct. Hi, I'm Stephanie Ostigian, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak on this subject this evening. I have my last child coming through the high school and have had three previous who've attended the Hudson School District. And have been so pleased with the leadership. And I really thank you for your service here as board members and the superintendent as well. My point tonight is that masking our school-aged children for the K through 12 time of their lives sacrifices the social, emotional, and physiological development of our future leaders. School boards have no right to trump the family's personal responsibility in the area of personal health measures. The fear over COVID-19 is threatening to replace our freedoms over personal health decisions. I took a representative sample of the three highest-rated mask offerings at a big-box retailer and read the disclaimer and descriptions of the products, and I have them here. The first one is actually the brand We Care Face Masks. And the disclaimer is, this is not an N95. This is a general-use face mask. This mask is not intended for medical use and not proven to reduce the transmission of disease. The second highest-rated mask is the ALG Patriot N95 Mask. And within the description, it does state, "These masks are not intended for medical or surgical use and should not be used in a clinical setting. They do not prevent the transmission of any disease to the wearer. The masks have not been FDA-cleared or approved." And then the final is a 3M Daily Face Mask. And a little bit of the description, I thought quite interesting. It says, "Whether you're traveling, running errands, attending personal appointments, or doing other activities where face coverings are needed, reach for the Daily Face Mask. By wearing a mask that's adjustable to your face and comfortable, you are doing your part to show you care for your community's well-being." And then the disclaimer states, "They are not intended for medical use and do not eliminate the risk for contracting any disease or infection. If you have health conditions such as asthma, heart conditions, or respiratory conditions, you must consult your healthcare provider before use." Thank you for listening. That is all I have.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rob Brown from Omaha Road.
Good evening, School Board, Dr. Olet Administration. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We've been here before. Last year, we spent time as a community focusing on how do we best make sure our kids stay in school and that they remain healthy, that they're able to participate in their school programs? It's a challenge. Certainly, many school districts go through the challenges of trying to figure out how to best serve their communities. Everyone here, I believe, believes children are important. They believe that they should be in school full-time. We may differ a bit on a few areas. But the long and the short of it, if we can keep our kids in school and the administration has focused on data, turning that data into information and making objective decisions that keep our kids in school, then I would suggest we continue supporting our school district towards that end. On Slide 5 of 18, in the presentation that was part of the agenda, it says masks are optional. We will monitor and adjust the face mask protocols needed. My suggestion, as last year, we had a matrix that was provided to the community. If there's a way to take the subjectivity out of any decisions that may impact our community, that might drive wedge into our community, allowing that matrix developed through objective data that is transparent and public will go a long way. Will we make everyone happy? Certainly not. But it'll go a long way towards whatever decisions ultimately the board makes and the administration recommends to the board. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Next up, Beth Weiskopf of Donegal Way.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing two minutes tonight. This is such an emotional topic and people need to be heard. So I really do appreciate the extra time. I have a petition, which I gave to Tim, also one for each of you to look at, to the Hudson School Board to make masks optional for the coming school year, just like your plan allows as of now. As of last night at 7:00 PM, we collected 224 signatures going door-to-door and holding two signing events in person. And 253 signatures in our online petition that we created and shared with our contacts directly, not through a company like Change.org like I did in the spring. We had a total of 477 signatures in one week. As of right before this meeting, our online signatures were at 278 for a total of 502 signatures total. All those that have signed have Hudson School District addresses, except for a couple who have chosen to open and enroll their children in the Hudson School District and feel like they should have their voices be heard also. We are asking that you give families the choice to choose what is right for them. Those that want to mask can, and those that don't, don't have to. Those that are not comfortable with this can participate in distance learning. So far, 19 out of 5,609 students enrolled in the Hudson School District have signed up for distance learning. That is less than one-half of 1% of our student population. Over 99% of families want their children to be in person and decided this while we were mask optional this summer. I have sent you numerous studies and articles showing that kids are not the spreaders, nor are they severely affected by this virus. There is not one documented case in the U.S. where a student transmitted the virus to a teacher. Last year, Hudson didn't have one positive case from close contact. At this junction, educators and community members interested in vaccination have been vaccinated. The FDA is pulling the PCR tests off the shelves because they have been deemed faulty. How many cases last year through today were false positives because of this? Viruses will never go away. They run their course. They always do. Our Board of Education, I'm almost done, is charged with safeguarding the education of our kids. You are not elected to take on the burden of public health, nor should you have the responsibility of weighing in our healthcare matters that is best left to parents and their healthcare providers. You should be encouraging families to make the decision that is right for their own family. The school district is not a medical organization. Please leave the health decisions up to the families and stick to educating their kids. And I would like to suggest that you do a survey like you did last year with going back to school to see what the majority of the families in Hudson would like. Thank you.
Next up, we have Margaret Harris of Summer Street North.
Hi, thank you. I just want to start. My name, like you said, Margaret Harris. I have three kids in the Hudson School District. We did choose to homeschool our children last year because of the mask mandate. I would add that my kids have been thriving throughout the homeschooling and throughout summer and participating in close-contact sports, all-day camps, sleepovers, playdates, and without restrictions. I want to talk about why I think masks should be optional, as I feel they do more harm than good. They have not been proven to be effective, and the virus particles have been proven to be too small to be stopped by these flimsy masks. Let's talk about the science a little bit. There was a study done in Germany of 26,000 schoolchildren, and they found that 68% of children had problems while wearing masks, including irritability, headaches, difficulty concentrating, less happiness, reluctance to go to school, impaired learning, and drowsiness or fatigue. Another study that was even more concerning to me was a research or research published by the Journal of the American Medical Association for Pediatrics, found that wearing masks caused children to inhale too much carbon dioxide. Normal CO2 levels are .04%, upper safety limits are .2%, and children wearing masks were getting as much as 1.6%. I won't even go into the amount of bacteria that builds up on masks after children wearing them for an entire day. And as others have stated, this is not a children's illness. There's risks involved in everything that our kids do. And they're more likely to be affected by other things such as flu, car accidents, drowning, and all these other horrible things. Yes, even considering the Delta variant. Yet we still allow them to live normal lives and not force them to live in a bubble or in fear. My kids were so excited to come back to school this year, but now said that they would prefer to stay home again if they have to wear masks. I'm not going to subject my kids to another, to a year of faceless teachers and friends. I just want you guys to take the full picture into consideration when making the decision and look at the overall well-being of kids. And I feel like this should be a decision made by families, and it's a personal medical choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob German of Troutbrook Road.
Hi, my name is Jacob. I don't have anything prepared formally. I just wanted to speak my mind real quick here at the town board for the school board meeting. This coming year, mainly I want to talk about the mask-wearing with the kids. And I fully agree with the current board position to have mask-wearing optional. And I strongly encourage the board to consider making that, keeping that optional all year. There are no studies that are out there that show mask-wearing has, the masks that are worn, that our children have been wearing, in the manner that they've been allowed to wear them, they don't stop the spread of this virus. This virus is going to go where it's going to go. And the measures that you would have to take, which a hospital setting takes to limit the spread, you can't do in a school. And so the masks, as we've had them last year, they were doing nothing for the children. While they were doing something, nothing positive. It inhibits, I mean, just thinking about going through school myself, the student, I mean, there's all kinds of nonverbal communication that happens behind that mask that the kids are missing, especially for hearing-impaired students. And beyond that, I have five children in this district. Last year, my second-oldest had 13 absences from headaches. He's never had headaches before. That was a last-year thing for him. And I'm fully convinced that the headaches were from wearing a mask eight hours today. So that's my opinion on the matter. And I just want the board to consider continuing the full-year maskless, if at all possible.
Thank you. Tim Congdon. And I'm sorry, Talgrin Street, it says.
My name's Tim. I'm from Town and Troy Township. We've got two graduates and one still in the district here in Hudson. So start out just with a quick thank you to all of you for the time that you put in as board members and everything else. It's a dirty, thankless job answering dozens of emails from passionate people on both sides of this topic that we're discussing right now. With that, I wanted to thank you also for the, what I would say is a well-thought-out back-to-school blueprint. I read through the presentation that was on the agenda, and I like it, like others have been saying, especially the point about keeping masks optional. I really do think that's important for us as well. As others have mentioned, you know, there's, whether we're talking about a piece of paper that came from overseas that we're strapping over our face or a scrap of cloth that was in Grandma's sewing room, there's really not that much they're doing for us anyways. My regular work as a firefighter, one of the things we talk about a lot is risk-benefit analysis. Every decision we make is based on weighing the risks versus the rewards of what we're going to do. We've talked about the rewards already, and they're not really there of, say, a mandatory mask kind of thing. They're just not as effective as maybe we would like that to be. Now, let's look at the risk side. Some might say, well, there's no risk. What's the big deal if you just have to wear it? Just put up and shut up, whatever else. What I do in my work, not only have we been, you know, as much as I detest the term, the whole frontline worker responder kind of thing, whatever else, we've been doing this for almost a couple of years now. And what I'm seeing as a far bigger effect than all of this COVID stuff is the effects on people of that not, losing that nonverbal communication. You can't see faces. We can't read body language. I'm doing that right now as I'm looking at you, listening to my comments. We take that away when we cover up people's faces. It's a huge thing for us. And what we're seeing out on the quote-unquote "front lines" is increased depression, addiction problems, suicidal ideation, suicide attempts, all kinds of these other psychological effects, I'll close it up here, that we're losing. So there is a significant risk in taking away nonverbal communication. So I really would encourage you to, as you continue, whether it's that whole, make a decision now as the year goes on, maybe have to reevaluate as we did last year. Keep that in the back of your mind. What are the rewards versus what are the risks of the action that we're going to take? So thank you again for all that you do.
All right. Next up, Jennifer Norden, Norden, 8th Street in Hudson.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Norden, and I have a freshman entering high school this year. Very excited. I was looking at your little statement of what you're dedicated to, and it, I'm going to give you some reminders of that as I read through, that you are collectively committed to providing a rigorous, student-centered environment to ensure equitable experiences for all students. As you move forward, making decisions regarding COVID this year, I just have some bullet points. They're very blunt because I have seen a lot of the damage that's been done this last school year with friends and family and their experiences with their students having to do distance learning, having to navigate the quarantine rounds and the masks and all of the things that were supposedly supposed to keep them safe. And I do want to remind the school district that there have been more suicides in the school district in the last couple of years than the deaths of children from COVID. So keep that in mind. The first thing I would like to remind you is that choosing to accept or decline any medical device or medical product is a human right. Number two, masks are a respiration-altering medical device and must remain optional for the entire school year. Number three, COVID testing is an unreliable invasive medical procedure that must remain optional. Number four, vaccines, whether experimental or FDA-approved, are medical products and must remain optional. Number six, my child's body is not government property. Parents have the right to choose to follow the advice of our own medical professionals and doctors and not the CDC, not the NIH, not the Department of Health, and certainly not the Department of Education when it comes to personal, family, medical decisions. I just want to remind you that viruses come and go, but the loss of freedom is forever. Thank you.
Next up is Shelley Vance from 6th Street, presuming that's Hudson. After Ms. Vance, I have Dan Buckle is up next. I'll just try to announce who's up next so that you can be ready. All right.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for letting us speak and thank you for all that you're doing for our children. I'm a Hudson resident. I have two kids, one going in sixth grade and one going into kindergarten. Just have a few bullet points. Number one, COVID spread in children is miniscule. Number two, COVID spread from children to adults is miniscule. Number three, where risk exists, there must be a choice as to whether we wear masks, vaccinate, social distance, et cetera. The social, emotional, and physical toll is far more great to simply say, "Take one for the team." Please stand for our children and let us parents decide what is best for our kids. Thank you so much for your time and thank you for the hard work you're doing for our kids.
Thank you. Next up is Dan Buckle of Cratley Lane, and after him, it will be Carol Ivance, if I'm reading that right.
Hello, everybody. I'm Dan Buckle. This is my, I'm entering my 12th year as a school counselor in the middle school in Hudson. And a couple of things I just wanted to say is, number one, thank you guys very much for your consideration of looking at making masks optional for the school year. I know what it means and what you're going up against. So I really appreciate the thoughtful consideration you've put towards that. As one of your employees, as a person that sits in your schools, I thought I could just share a little bit about some of the effects of masks that I saw last year, just for your consideration to think about as you look at the school year coming up, because I know you're going to have to face some hard decisions at some point. One of the things I saw in my office after seeing hundreds of kids is I did see an increase in anxiety. What was that about? Masking, COVID restrictions, Plexiglas? Sure, all those things. But some of the things that were specific were, like my new students that came in, they tried to make relationships with kids in the school, and they had a really hard time doing that. I've been doing this for a long time, and new students, and Hudson in particular, is really great at making new relationships. And my new students had a harder time than ever this year. So I want that to be just a consideration as you look at that, as the new information might come to you this year. I also saw something really unique. As students started talking about masks being optional for this year, this coming year, we would have conversations. I'd say, well, what do you think you're going to do? And they would, some of them said, "I'm still going to wear the mask." And I says, "Okay, tell me about that." It was not for health reasons. It was because they liked to hide, because they felt bad about the way they looked. They felt bad about their acne. They felt bad about being an awkward middle school kid, which we all did at that time. But that's not a healthy response, not to be able to hide from those things, to not go through those things with your peers. It's not a healthy way to go through adolescence. So it's, they're not deciding that because they're scared of COVID, because they want to have healthy bodies. It's because they're middle schoolers, and sometimes they take the easy way out. And for the staff, I saw a dramatic decrease in satisfaction in their jobs, including myself. It was a hard year to go through. So my only quick request is, as you look at the new data that comes through, as you have to face these decisions, I would request that you just have a committee formed that could actually look at all the data and the science that's involved in making a decision to mask or not, and then present that data, that science, to the public so we can know what's going on inside your, in your thought process. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Next up is Carol Ivance of Norwood Drive, and after that, John Stoyan.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for your hard work. And at the moment, I think your idea of making masks optional is wonderful, but in this last year and a half or so, we've seen far too many flip-flops from Fauci to various government agencies. And so I want to ask you to keep the masks optional. People want to wear them, and they have a good reason. That's, you know, their body. But, you know, if you consider making them not optional again, I guess I'm asking the following question. What science are you following when you claim to have good reason to force masks? you following when you claim to have good reason to force masks on anyone, but especially our most vulnerable? And they're, like people have said, not proven to even get COVID, much less pass it on. The onus is on you to explain your reasons. I don't need evidence that they're dangerous partly because I'm a nurse, partly because it's too obvious. Fourth grade science, our bodies run on oxygen, plants run on CO2, you can't cross them. But I have read numerous studies that prove that not only our flimsy cloth or paper mask covering is not effective, for one thing, because of the infinitesimally small size of the virus, but they're actually harmful. Our oxygen levels should be 92% or higher to maintain proper brain functioning. But any mask will drop that to the 80 or even in some cases, 70 percentiles within minutes. And these kids are wearing them all day long. And you ask, what about surgical suites? They pump in more oxygen into surgical suites. As far as floor nurses, there are very, very few instances where we need to wear masks. Usually it's only gowns and gloves and it's not for very long. Carbon dioxide levels, like someone else said, reach alarmingly high levels, especially in children. They're the most vulnerable. That explains the irritability, headaches, restlessness, difficulty thinking, concentrating. Okay, I have a lot of other stuff, but okay, I want to say masks are totally ineffective. Even worse, they're harmful and mandating and worse forcing anyone to wear one is illegal and unconstitutional. I have autonomy over my body, not the state, not the school board, nobody else. And until a child is 18, they can't even get their ears pierced without parental consent. So the government certainly cannot force this on any of us. And I've got lots more, but thank you for your time and thank you again for your hard work.
John Stoyan of Laurel Avenue. Hopefully I'm pronouncing that right. You can correct me. And then Kristin Emerson is next.
My name is John Stojan. I have two kids in the Hudson School District. I served for 15 years as a military officer, providing data analytics and recommendations to senior leaders. So I understand how complex data can be and how important it is to rely on experts and people that have experience working with complex data. It's not necessarily about who yells the loudest. In this case, we have those experts within the CDC and within our own county health departments. What I ask of the administration and also the school board is that we just follow those recommendations that are coming from the CDC and these experts that have that experience in order to make these recommendations. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kristin Emerson of Green Street and then Therese Mitchell.
Hi, I'm Kristin Emerson. I have a graduate and then I also have somebody going into their sophomore year here at the high school. Not one person up here has mentioned the Delta strain. Okay, what we're dealing with right now is not what we were dealing with when we shut down a year ago, right? We're dealing with something a lot more contagious. The current COVID strain, the Delta, is 1.23 times more contagious than the Alpha strain. A doctor named Larry Brilliant, an epidemiologist with WHO, who helped eradicate smallpox, by the way, viruses do go away, says this may be the most contagious virus in living memory. Child hospitalizations have seen a steepest increase since the pandemic began. This is not the COVID strain that doesn't affect children. Okay, this strain is killing children and without adult vaccination at a herd immunity rate, we can only expect more contagious, dangerous variants to mutate into our vulnerable populations. Who are Hudson's most vulnerable are children, not only the 12 and under who can't get the vaccine, but also the 12 to 18 year olds who may have parents who choose not to protect them with the vaccine. A mask optional approach is a blueprint for disaster.
Okay, if I asked at the beginning if people could be polite and treat others as you would want to be treated, evidently we have many in here that can't follow that rule. But if you could please remain quiet, everyone has a chance to get their two minutes and I'm going to stop the clock here and allow you to finish, please.
Thank you. Both the CDC and the St. Perry County Public Health Recommendations, currently, they now both recommend that all people vaccinated or otherwise wear masks in public places inside school buildings. That includes staff, students, and visitors. I think it would be a big mistake to ignore that recommendation. To compound matters, it seems as though IDL is no longer an option. The families who wanted to use that option aren't able to at this point. Families who feel unsafe sending their children into an unmasked environment don't really have a choice. Families of students with IEPs don't have an option to open enroll elsewhere. We're stuck here, no matter what you do. So how are you going to protect unvaccinated, maybe the unvaccinated autistic child who really can't wear a mask? How are you going to protect that kid, right? From what he could be experiencing here, she could be experiencing. What are you going to do to protect the most vulnerable? Now, that was my comment. This is a petition. We haven't been working all summer. We haven't been going door to door. We started this petition, I guess, when we saw the back to school blueprint. We've got about 200 signatures. So, you know, they win. Yep. But I do want to read it to you and submit it. The CDC has recommended masks in schools and that recommendation is made by the communicable disease experts. The Delta variant of COVID-19 is much more communicable. Viral loads are virtually the same in exposed people regardless of vaccination status. This variant is making unvaccinated people and kids sicker. Kids under the age of 12 cannot yet get the vaccine and therefore unprotected. Mask usage last year prevented inherently, prevented inherently.
Are you almost done?
Oh, I am, but.
Can you, can you just submit the petition and we'll be able to read it?
I can. And I believe it was sent via email.
All right. Very good. Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Breton German of Troutbrook Road. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. Therese Mitchell, I said was next, right? I turned Therese Mitchell of Sand Hill Plante Road North.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, for listening to me and the rest of the people here tonight. As you can tell, we all feel very strongly and care about our children a great deal. I was happy to see the back to school plan that endorses in-person learning. I think it's critical for students to come back in person. I don't think virtual learning works very well. So I commend you on that. I think that's critical. But I think if you're going to have in-person learning, you also have to mitigate the risk factors. How do you do that? You do it through mask mandate. You do through social distancing and cleaning protocols. You probably can't social distance with a full school. So that probably is a reduced mitigating factor. The other thing you can do is try to encourage people to get vaccinated and you don't really have a lot of control over that. You do have control over mandating the masks. I didn't plan to spend time on this, but I heard various comments about cloth masks don't protect. I think the experts at the Mayo Clinic would choose to disagree. I can certainly send you a number of studies that have clearly shown cloth masks do protect. There was also a reference to JAMA, JAMA article about carbon dioxide levels that study has been retracted and debunked as not containing enough scientific, as containing numerous scientific issues. The JAMA retracted that about a month ago. There's nothing illegal or unconstitutional about requiring masks. That's another fallacy that exists out there. I would encourage you to revisit it. I think one person, a previous speaker, mentioned about trying to remove the subjectivity and the emotion involved and trying to come up with some sort of matrix where it's actually based in facts and science, not in ideology. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, Breton German of Troutbrook Road. And then after Mr. German, we have Sean German. So.
Hello. I kind of came here in short notice. I kind of learned that this is happening tonight. So I'm just going to kind of tell you what I, I think. Last year I was a freshman at this high school and I can tell you that having the cohorts was kind of horrible for my personal friendships, along with having to wear masks and other, just social distancing and other things was pretty damaging. Plus, oh yeah, gym, I don't even know why you're required to wear a mask during gym. That's just a horrible idea. Like absolutely that that shouldn't, that should just not be the case. Like I get so, you get tired when you're doing gym. You have to breathe. The mask reduces it. Plus you're getting more carbon dioxide in. And if you're doing it indoors, it's even worse. We had, I think, a unit where we were doing indoors, we had to do a bunch of exercises because it was raining. We had to, we just had to do everything indoors, I guess, that day. But either way, I think masks were not really needed in that situation considering what we were doing. Well, yeah, some of my friendships didn't go too well this year and I really don't want to wear masks this year again. I'm kind of happy that you guys are making it not necessarily required this year that we have to wear masks. I hope you continue that.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Sean German and after Sean is Scooter Wine or Witt?
Good evening. I just want to talk really kind of quickly. I have five kids in the district. This isn't the first time I've come before the board for various safety reasons. But I am thankful that you have decided to make it optional this year until it's not. What I'm concerned about is when it's not and who's going to make that decision? Is it just the board or are you going to ask for public comment and for surveys? I just know that these masks are not working for kids. They, they get COVID at school and everybody's wearing masks. They bring it home. Everybody gets sick. It's silly to mask our kids. One, they can't see their faces. I'm a people person. I work in the people business. It is so crucial to see the emotion on people's faces and to see when they light up or if they're making a disgust face at you because I, I hear that's happening when my kids come home, that they can make faces at teachers or whatever. And it's super disrespectful, right? But teachers don't see that. And I think it's important that they see it. I also think that like not just last year, but the, the spring when it hit, my kids, I have two on IEPs, had to go through a very excruciating last part of the year or kind of pushed to the side. And they just didn't have the support that they needed. This last year was fine. I had a middle schooler who had 13 absences. I went to the school and I said, I want to print out of all my kids' absences. Why are they being absent? I was called. So I lost, I missed 13 days of work too, because I have to go pick them up every time for just a headache. And he is an IEP. He jumps and he flaps and he's very animated. He works himself up. He's, he's tired. He's not getting the oxygen he needs. So inadvertently, he's getting headaches. So if we could, it always should have been optional for kids to wear a mask. It shouldn't be forced upon them. And I think that's the hardest part because I understand where the opposite side is where you should mask, right? But it's just, there's just not enough studies to say that they're actually working. And I want, if they're going to be masked, they should be working properly. And in this case, we can't. I can make 100 masks and 100 masks are not going to prevent them from getting virus. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I hope your scooter from Run Lane, and if you could say your last name, because I'm sorry, I can't read. White? Okay, there's, that is a T. It's just, all right, very good.
My name is Scooter White. I appreciate you guys hearing us and listening to our public voice today. I have a child in the high school, the middle school and the elementary school here in the Hudson School District. I just recently retired from the military after 21 years and served all over the world. And I appreciate the fact that we have our freedoms here in America. Seeing the way that mandatory things happen in different countries and different parts of the world is really, it's eye opening. There's not studies that I can tell you that I've read about it, but I've seen it personally, the way that it affects people. Doing that to our kids now, forcing them to wear a mask, we are not telling people who want to wear a mask that they can't. We are asking you to give our children, we as parents, the choice to allow our kids to wear a mask or to not wear a mask. I really, really appreciate the, the blueprint that you guys have provided for the school year. I would love if you guys just said masks are optional the entire year. It would take decisions off of your hands and put it in the parents' hands and let them deal with that the entire year. So thank you guys very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Next up is Rachel Eby and then after Rachel is Sarah Gere.
First of all, thank you very much for all the hard work that you do making these decisions. I don't envy your job in that, but thank you for putting thought and consideration to what's best for all of our children. We all have the same goal. We want our kids to be healthy. We want the best learning environment and with as little disruption as possible. Last year was really hard on families. It was really hard on teachers. And I think that we all hoped that this would all be behind us by now, but we simply can't will it away. At the end of last year, we didn't know what would happen with variants over the summer. As the school year wrapped up last year, I anticipated being able to get a vaccine for my youngest child who's 11 sometime in September and be able to begin the new school year with that option at least on the table. But it is not. We now have the Delta variant that's ticking up higher and affecting younger people. I currently have a friend who is younger than me. He's in his 30s and he's in ICU. The FDA is now not anticipating approval for the vaccine for kids under 12 until midwinter, which gives them five months together with little to reduce transmission. If I'd known all of this earlier in the school year, not at the end of the summer, I might have been able to find an online option for my youngest daughter who's too young to get vaccinated. But at this time of the year, most enrollment for those options is closed. So like the previous speaker said, I'm kind of stuck. For many families, going online wouldn't be an option in any case, as we all experienced last year. And that was kind of a miserable experience for a lot of people going back and forth online and then in person. It wasn't, our in-person schools aren't designed to be online. I understand that. None of us want to upend our lives, but we want a reasonably safe environment for our children. So I would just ask that, at least until we have a vaccine available, we don't consider masks the enemy. We consider the virus the enemy and the transmission of the virus the enemy. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, I think it's Gere, G E H R, and from Grandview Drive. And then Emily Janisch is next.
Hi. I don't have anything prepared. Speaking publicly actually terrifies me, but I feel more strongly about that, this than that. I just want to follow up on what a couple of people had said. I think Beth talked about polling your parents. And I think that's so incredibly important because when I first saw the blueprint, I was cautiously optimistic. And then I saw the petition going around, the continuing to make masks optional petition. And I cannot tell you how many people I sent it to whose response was, why are you worried about this? The school district already put out their blueprint and masks are not on the table. We can stop worrying. We can let down our guard. And a lot of people did. And I imagine that's why every seat in here is in full is because a lot of people have no idea. Second of all, I just wanted to just remind everybody to have a little perspective as far as our kids are at a greater risk of getting in an accident on the way to school than they are of becoming dangerously sick from COVID. So perspective is a good thing. Also, I just wanted to share if you're, if some people aren't aware that, well, when we saw what happened last year, my husband and I came up with a plan for when we saw what happened last year, my husband and I came up with a plan for this year. I did have one son come home to homeschool partway through the year last year. Um, so for this year, anticipating the same issues, we got my youngest enrolled at Trinity where they did not mask at all last year. No outbreak. I'm not sure how much Hudson School District and Trinity are in communication with each other, but they would be great ones to talk to as far as how's it going to go without any masks? And again, to just reiterate what so many other people have said, we aren't telling anybody that they cannot wear a mask. And like they said, if they're very confident that they work, then by all means do it. And then you should have no issue that I won't put my kids in a mask. We're all done.
Emily Janish, and then Cynthia Hassan.
Hi, good evening. Emily Janish, I have four kids here in the Hudson School District, and I'm here to speak in favor of requiring masks. This is about safety. That is what this comes down to, medical or otherwise. My husband has been a safety professional for over fifteen years. And OSHA relied on safety professionals to create safety protocols for workplaces, which require masks for their employees. Our children are no different. We have safety requirements all over the place in this country. We have to wear seat belts, life jackets, helmets, eye protection. The school district would never allow our children to take a field trip without safety measures. If they were taking a swimming field trip, I'm pretty sure that you would require our children to be wearing life jackets to keep them safe. So you won't have drowning or some horrific event on your hands. Why would they take this safety risk? Masks mitigate risk. Masks are required on buses as federally mandated. Our students are still going to need to be wearing masks. If anything, I would ask you to consider a compromise requiring masks for those twelve and under who are at highest risk. I ask that you provide safety measures for our children. And think of those that are the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Cynthia Hassan, and then next is Nikki Robbins.
Good evening. I'm Cynthia Hassan, and I have seven grandchildren in the Hudson School District. And unfortunately, many of my family members have had COVID. And I've had at least one pass away from COVID. So I obviously have, coming from a place of you do everything to protect yourself and your family members. A lot of us still have family members who are very vulnerable. And with young children who are not protected, and if we can't protect them, they're at risk to spread to other individuals. So I'm absolutely in support of the mask mandate for children to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Nikki Robbins, and then Stacy from Bailey Road.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Robbins. Thank you for taking our comment and thank you for your services, board members. Appreciate it. Um, I just really want to say I'm in support of those that have asked for masks to remain optional. Um, I I believe it's the parents' right to make health decisions for their children, masking, vaccinations, all of that should be on the parents. And as a previous speaker said, if people are so adamant that masks work, then they have the right to put their kids in them or keep them at home in homeschool. They don't have to put their kids at risk. And for those who believe that not being masked is the safest thing for their child, they can decide. Please leave the decision with the parents. Thank you.
Next up, Stacy from Bailey Road. Might be a V, Vipler, Vipler? Kepka, okay?
That's okay. Um, good evening. Thank you so much for taking the time to to hear our voices and our concerns. Um, it's greatly appreciated. Um, I'm a mama of four children. I also have many nieces and nephews, many of them which are in the well, recently just graduated out of the Hudson School District. Um, I just, first of all, I want to say thank you for making the masks optional for for our children. And I would just ask that moving forward, um, that you would make the mask COVID testing, contact tracing and COVID vaccines optional and up to the parent's discretion. Um, we know our children best and we know what's best for them physically and mentally. Um, I think I'm more concerned about the mental health of my children at this point than I am of COVID. Um, in fact, a couple of my children have already had COVID and have recovered. Um, but just so much of the mental health decline that I've seen in some of my nieces and nephews, I've seen issues with having to do credit recovery, um, struggling in school, doing online school, going in person, the back and forth, back and forth. Many missing days of school due to headaches. Um, just the overall, overall stress of what has taken place. Um, I think I would just like to ask, um, how many kids in the school district pass away from COVID nineteen? And then how many are we concerned about mentally and their mental health? Um, I would also say or ask that if you take, um, start making decisions on behalf of the parents and their, in their children's physical well-being, that you would also take responsibility in for their mental health as well and amp up your mental health services and amp up, um, any, any thing that can be done there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Emily Martin, and then Maria Rudy. Ms. Martin is from Eleventh Street South.
Hi there. Can you hear me? Okay, um, my daughter will be in second grade at EP Rock. My other daughter is starting 4K there this year. Um, I'm terrified of speaking publicly FYI, but I just wanted to share my perspective as a nurse in the emergency department at HCMC in Minneapolis. While we were initially enjoying a summer seeming free of COVID, the COVID positive cases are indeed trickling back into our hospital. We are starting to see an uptick in critical COVID patients as well, particularly with the unvaccinated. Our hospital tends to see such trends first in the metro area. Therefore, I know that this will be occurring eventually. If not already in our own community here in Hudson. I understand that many parents are opposed to mask wearing, and this is a theme you have to balance with school officials. Regardless, I'm urging to reinitiate the mask-wearing mandate at school in order to protect the district children. If all else, require masks for children less than twelve years old who are ineligible for vaccination and at the mercy of our decisions. I want you to know how much I appreciate the school district and all that it has already done for my children. We've had an excellent experience thus far with Hudson Schools. I believe last year you handled the unforeseen pandemic very well. I'm as sick of COVID as you may be. I'm sick of masks, perhaps arguably even more as a healthcare provider. I've seen personally hundreds, if not thousands of COVID patients. I've worked with them. And I know in my heart that due to rising COVID cases, the mask mandate is necessary once again. As a simple intervention that allows unvaccinated kids to attend school in person while greatly decreasing the risk of transmission. Heaven forbid even one Hudson School District child or staff member became another statistic in COVID-related deaths or long-term complications. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Maria Rudy. And then our last speaker for the public hearing is Amy Bill.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board and I wanted to reflect for a moment and say, as I look out in the room, I see an overwhelming amount of support for our children and a modeling of the behavior that we hope that they engage in when they find somebody that they may not see eye to eye with. My sister is in the White Bear Lake School District and they have their school board meeting going on right now, talking about their COVID plan. And they had to shut the meeting down twenty minutes into it because of how contentious it became. And so I thank everybody for respectfully listening to one another. We may not see eye to eye in everything, but we are united in our love of our children and wanting the best for them. I have two kids in the district, a fifth grader this year and a sixth grader. I am greatly concerned that my children are not age eligible for vaccines. I do believe that the science shows us that masks work. And masks were part of our layered mitigation strategy, which our public health professionals and our infectious disease professionals have all recommended that we follow. And I implore you to listen to the professionals with the training and the knowledge who have spent years studying and pulling all of the data and saying, what does the preponderance of the evidence tell us is our best strategy? We will not eliminate risk, but we can do everything we can to mitigate it. And layered strategies is our best effort and masks are a part of that. If you do not, you must immediately open up the option for parents who have kids who are not eligible for vaccines to allow them to enroll in online learning, something we were forced to make a decision on on May fifteenth of this year. Thank you.
Next is Amy Bill from Sixth Street North.
Um, thank you very much for having this forum and for allowing people to speak. I have two children older than her in the district. One is going into second grade. And my son is supposed to be going into 4K. Um, my concern is with my son that is going into 4K. He has sensory processing disorder. And we are trying our hardest to get him the proper evaluations and diagnosis that he needs. And I have been told by several, his pediatrician, other medical professionals, we cannot get our proper evaluations done until he has started school. He will not wear a mask. We avoid going anywhere that he has to wear a mask because he just won't. And if my son cannot attend school because he can't wear a mask, how do I get the evaluations that he needs? So that I can get the proper diagnosis so that then he can come into school. If he doesn't have a diagnosis, how will he get an exemption from the mask? Um, and that's one of my main concerns. Also, my daughter who went to school here last year wearing a mask. Um, it's just, it was hard. I, she came home every day and talked about how she wished she could actually go play with her friends and you know, all these things that our kids need, they need socialization, they need to play with their friends and they need to not be scared about it. My other concern is reading, um, what you guys put out about the masks is if my children are at their desk socially distanced in the classroom, they will still be required to wear the mask. But the teacher up front who is teaching will not be if she is distant or he. And to me, that's a problem because how do our kids understand that difference? That to me does not make sense and it's a double standard. And why are our kids, how are our kids going to understand why their teacher doesn't have to wear the mask, but they do? And I just, thank you very much. I really hope you consider keeping masks optional for all of our children this year. Thank you.
And that concludes the public hearing on the COVID nineteen plan. Next on the agenda is citizens' request to speak about non-action items, and we have one request from Tammy Moot Hayden or Moof Hayden of Canyon Boulevard. And she is speaking on school start times.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'm not talking about the mask tonight. Um, but I just wanted to come before you tonight because um, as you, some of you know, about three years ago, I came in front of the board to express my um, concern about research that I had been hearing about, uh, school start times affecting children's health when school start times for teens and tweens are early, um, that does not allow them to get a good night's sleep. And while this might not seem as, as important as masking right now, I ask that you please, please don't let this go by the wayside. Um, I know you guys have a lot going on with COVID and masks and all, but this is important for our children's health too. And I hear everyone talking about, um, their children's health, and I think we need to not forget that when children don't get enough sleep and research is abundant on the lack of sleep at the early school start times, um, is is contributing to this lack of sleep. Does lead to anxiety, obesity, car accidents, um, academic implications. So so I know that you formed a committee that looked at school start times and I was really heartened, um, on that, when I heard that. And I, and I know people who are on the committee. And I think that there was good faith in the development of that committee. And now I would ask that as you look at the results, um, the committee overwhelmingly, um, supports change within the school district's start times. And my understanding is that 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 one of the options that's being put out there is no change, and that really is not what the committee had come up with. So if you went to, um, to form the committee, uh, people spent their time, they did their research and they made a decision. And I would ask that you carefully consider that decision. And my understanding is you're going to put out um, a community survey. My understanding is that is what the committee was for. There, there was people that could apply to be on the committee um, that were chosen. That was a cross-section. They were people who had the time and the willingness to do the research. And if now you're going to put it out to the community, I would ask that somehow then we need to make that same research available to the community that will be putting their input. Uh, and I would ask that you allow committee members to participate in the development of the community survey. And again, I guess I would, I would really ask why you have put no change as an option when there was a four to one, um, majority that there needed to be changed. So um, that's, um, just what I wanted to bring up tonight, and I hope you, um, will strongly consider those things I brought up. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up on the agenda is superintendent reports, plural. I guess we start with a COVID nineteen operational update.
All right. Uh, thank you, Jamie. Hopefully people can hear me. Um, the COVID operational update is is going to be very brief because we're going to be talking more about, uh, where we're sitting COVID-wise as we look at the back-to-school blueprint, uh, item, item B in the topics for discussion and in action. Um, we're continuing to monitor the situation around, uh, St. Croix County, around our school district. Uh, we are currently, uh, you know, we finished our first week of our second session of summer school. Um, and we just had our, our first day of our second week of the second session. Uh, today, uh, we are kind of been back in swing. We've had a lot of kids in the buildings and so you know, right now things are holding pretty steady and, um, it's, it's been, you know, a pretty positive experience this summer. We have worked on the, you know, the back-to-school blueprint, which was, you know, a recommendation to give to the board that we went over with you uh, at your last work session, you know, as we talk about, you know, the need to approve that and then essentially reapprove it every six months, uh, until twenty twenty-four as, as outlined by the federal government. So, you know, the operational side, I think some of the data and things like that will be talking about as we get into the back school blueprint, so not going to spend a ton of time there. As far as school start update or start of school update. just want to point to a couple of items, you know, school is just right around the corner. It seems like this summer has, has flown by. We just had our administrative retreat today with our leadership team, really kind of planning and getting ready for the school year and in the long term, not just this year, but several years on the road as we try to operationalize our strategic plan. But a couple of dates that are coming up, I put in there, you know, our welcome back. Our summer academy is coming up, the 16th through the 18th. That's where we're doing some data workshops and different things that are going on in the district with our staff. We have some different trainings that are going to be coming on or coming up. Our all, our new staff are reporting Thursday, the 19th, right Andrea? The 19th. So our new staff will be reporting. If you have, how many new staff we have in the district approximately?
As of right now, I believe it's 40 certified staff, 41 actually as of today.
Forty-one certified teaching staff in the district. So we'll be going through training with them starting next Thursday. And then the following, the following Tuesday, the 24th is when the rest of all of our staff report. The back to school kind of rally that we do with all staff, it's right here at the high school. That is on Wednesday, the, the 25th. We have our wellness walk. We start with that, which is a great, great time. It's been tremendously attended in the past. And so we're encouraging board members who'd like to come. And then we have our, you know, our welcome back meetings and messages. And, and so it's just a great way to kick off the year. Look forward to doing that in person this year. You know, last year we couldn't do that. We did kind of some mini things, you know, across the district, each of the buildings, but really looking forward to that opportunity to being back, being back in person. And then our first day of school is August 30th. So it's, it's right around the corner. We're going to continue to, continue to kind of push through. So just kind of a heads up is what we have, you know, what we have coming up. I know we have, you know, school practices have already started, whether it be from marching band or for football. We have other sports that are going to be starting up here shortly and, and different music competitions and things like that. So we are, we are in full swing. We are definitely moving along as, as we go. The next, next item I want to touch base on is, is staffing and enrollment. So as Andrew said, we have 41 new certified staff here. You know, we do have fewer sections this year of elementary than we had last year. I think we have 99 sections of our elementary. And when we say sections, we mean classroom sections. So like a first grade, second grade, third grade across the district. Last year we had 104 sections, I think it was. So we are, you know, we're down about five sections. And I think, you know, one of the things that we trying to let people know and remind them is there's a lot of construction going on in Hudson. It's not yielding very many kits. You know, the cost of housing in, in Hudson is extremely high. And, you know, so our enrollment has been pretty stagnant over the last five or six years. We've made adjustments staffing wise as that, as that has happened. I think six years ago, when I came, I think we were right around 112 sections, 113 sections of elementary. And right now we're at 99 sections elementary. Now we would anticipate that that's, it's going to start to bounce, bounce back a little bit. We were down quite a few students last year as we, as we started the year and nobody quite knew what was going to happen with COVID and, and we are starting to see the numbers bounce back, but we're going to be keeping an eye on that. And we're just kind of letting people know that, you know, we're, it's, it's kind of an odd thing. You're seeing all this construction going on in the district and you're seeing all these things being built and yet we're just not, we're not growing. And it's, that's a real, it's a real challenge for us. And so we're going to continue to keep an eye on that. And then the last thing I want to touch base on is just the, the work session, August 30th. So that we originally were going to have a work session on the 23rd. We, I don't think we could get a quorum of the board maybe potentially at that time. So we, I think Tim checked with all the board members or August 30th work for the August work session. So we'll be having that work session on August 30th, just our regular normal August work session. So what, anything else? That's all I have for superintendent's update.
Any questions for Nick? Bob?
Oh yes, just a question about class sizes, number of students per class. Are we weighting our classes at only make those determining factors when we fill our classrooms? As far as like if there is any weight given to a number of IEPs or students with language issues or special needs per class, does that affect the number, the guided line of maximum students per class?
You know, I, I think, you know, it is our goal to make sure that we are, are having classes that are spread out. We're not just having a class that has all special ed students that happen to have special needs or all students that happen to have ELL or, or things along those lines, English Language Learners. But no, as far as saying, okay, this kid is counting as more than one kid because they happen to have an IEP or they happen to be at risk or some along those lines. No, we, we haven't done that per se. You know, again, we look at our class size guidelines as we, as we, and we try to remind people that that's what they are. They're guidelines. They're not hard and fast numbers. And because we have neighborhood elementaries that sometimes can be two section buildings or three section buildings and sometimes four section buildings. What can happen is, you know, though we have to go above those guidelines on occasion because, or go below those guidelines. Cause if we try to add a section right when we hit the top of the guideline, all of a sudden it throws the class size is really small. And sometimes, you know, if we, if we don't wait long enough, the class sizes get kind of big. Inevitably, it, it seems like whenever we decide not to split a section, we get a lot of move-ins. And, you know, we end up with really big class size. And when we're like, okay, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do this. We're gonna add another section of first grade or, or second grade in a building. Inevitably, we get move outs and then the numbers come down. So not that there's anything scientific about that, but that's kind of, you know, the way it works. But so we're continuing to watch it. We look at the guidelines, the guidelines from kindergarten to second grade are 18 to 22, third grade to fifth grade, you know, the guidelines are 22 to 27. It was interesting is Tim and I, Tim Erickson and I met with our architects to kind of get the facility committee ramped up. And we asked them about class size guidelines, what they thought, you know, because they work with a lot of school districts. And as you plan for facilities, you have to have these numbers. And I think on the Wisconsin side of the river, we're right where most, a lot of districts are. And if you were to compare us to schools in Minnesota, we actually have low, low class sizes compared to the other, the other side of the river. And so it's a balancing game, but you know, that's probably really long answer to a, to a short question. But no, we don't, we don't wait kids per se to say, okay, you have this many special ed students. So now all of a sudden you're going to have fewer students overall.
Thank you. Any other questions for Nick on any of his reports? Hearing none, move on to the consent agenda and would entertain a motion for the spending as it appears in the agenda.
So move.
We need the.
I tried.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I speak slowly, it will come up on the screen. There we go. I move that we approve the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of
Is there a second?
Okay. I heard a second over here. Was that Carrie?
All right, Carrie, second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion is approved. Any report on any of the consent items then? Nope. Okay. Then moving on, we have COVID-19 back to school blueprint is the agenda item.
So this is, this is the document that I think, or this is the document that the public hearing was about to get public feedback. We've gone through this document with the board. I, I'm not going to go through everything line by line as we've, as we've done before. I just, a couple of things I want to highlight, you know, we do have our guiding principles that we've tried to maintain all the way through last year and, and through this year, as we look at making decisions. If you go on to the third slide, this, the way we set up this third slide is in direct reflection to what we got as feedback from board members when we talk about, you know, our general operations. You know, what we were hearing last year from the board and even the summer was, what does our most recent school data tell us? Then our community data and then, you know, how well can we implement our mitigation procedures? And so, you know, that's as we made these recommendations to the board as a back to school plan, that's the data that we, we tend to look at. You know, and, and we, we do believe that the events that we have, that the activities that we have, the interactions that we have with kids are very important and, and we want to continue to have them. As we continue to move through this, this plan, obviously I think one of the, the, the biggest questions or the biggest hot button items is our masks. Do they continue to be optional? Does the board want them to be optional? Do they want to, you know, accept the plan or how that works? And, you know, as we looked at making this recommendation, we did look at the data and we tried to look at where we're, where we're sitting. And right now, as a county, we're sitting very similar to where we were sitting when the board took action to make mask optional on the 24th of May. Now, the biggest difference with it is, you know, the Delta variant that's out there. And, you know, we, we don't know what that, what that's going to look like in the district. But what we do know is that for this summer, we have been mask optional. We've had, I would say, you know, and talking with the different directors and the different programming, we're probably 95 to 97% of our students do not wear masks when they, when they come to our events or whether it be summer school, school age care, rated elite, band practices, you know, all the different things that we have going on. We've had a total this summer, I think of nine cases across the district. We know that the, the cases were not tied to what was going on in our buildings. And so, you know, as of right now, the recommendation would be looking at our local data. It would not point to making a change in the recommendation. It would say to continue to, you know, go optional. Now that doesn't mean that they're optional necessarily for the rest of the year. It doesn't mean that they necessarily are optional, you know, for two weeks or five weeks. But I guess, you know, the recommendation as it comes down to masking would be the next two weeks is going to be pretty telling for us, I believe. I think that the board, you know, should potentially revisit this on a, in a regular basis. But we're going to, I think we're going to have a pretty good idea as we still are three weeks out from today, from our first day of school that, you know, if the Delta variant does really take hold in our community, I think we're going to see quite a spike in cases. And I think, you know, we will need to kind of cross that bridge when we get there. If it doesn't, if we continue to stay at about the same level we've been all summer in our programming, then I think, you know, we would be in a pretty good spot to be able to maintain, maintain optional masking. Some people will say this is an easy decision, you know, both sides of the, of the argument will be, this is easy. This is, it should be optional or this is easy. They should be mandatory. And I think as you all know, sitting up here, there's nothing easy about this decision because there's a lot of different, different factors in play. And, you know, as we drafted this, this whole plan, we, we do look at the guidance from the CDC. We do look at the guidance from public health. We do look at the guidance from DPI. We do look at the guidance from the different folks. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we can follow every piece of guidance to a T. And, you know, last year we had this conversation because the guidance was very, very stringent coming from the CDC as we were getting ready to open school. And, you know, had we had followed that, you know, to a T, we probably wouldn't have been able to open schools because we, we couldn't have operated that way. And so it's trying to find a balance when we look at this stuff as we, as we roll this thing out and, and, and make adjustments. You know, I, I understand that the threat of COVID, I think it's very real. I think vaccines are our number one, you know, way to get over this, this hump. You know, but I think right now, you know, as we, as we look at this, I think this plan is, is a balanced approach. It's what we've been doing basically this summer with pretty, pretty good success. And like I said, if, if all of a sudden, you know, things start to take a turn the other direction, then I think, you know, the board could then act and say, you know what, we've tried optional for a while. It's not working. We can, you know, potentially go for a mask mandate for a specific amount of time, maybe a few weeks or what it, or what it may be. So there are other things that are in this, this blueprint that I just want to touch on. Responses to positive cases, you know, one of the biggest changes that probably comes with that is as a school district, we are no longer doing the contact tracing as it relates to us going through, trying to figure out all of the who are all the contacts and as it relates to close contacts. If, you know, public health, we're giving that back to public health. That is kind of their, their, their realm. So our plan would be if we had a positive case in a classroom, if it was an elementary classroom, we would send a letter home to all the parents in that classroom, letting them know that there's been a positive case in the classroom. Keep an eye on your kids. If they have symptoms, go get them tested so that we can kind of keep moving on. But we won't, wouldn't be moving to the, you know, quarantine of, of kids that happen to be sitting next to the, the kids in school and along those lines. We did. And I think, you know, some people say, well, how could you move away from that? And I think, you know, the biggest thing is, is we did, we quarantined the nurses. They, they, they did an excellent job last year. They took a ton of heat. And, but they did everything we asked them to do, but we, we quarantined a ton of kids, several thousands of kids over the course of the year as it related to close contacts. And it, we just didn't see those turn positive. Now we didn't, it's not to say that we didn't see positive cases come from close contacts. What I'm saying is we didn't see, you know, Johnny in third hour English test positive and the three kids sitting around him now all test positive. We just, we just didn't see that. We did see a lot of Johnny's positive, had a sleepover and now three or four other kids are positive. We did see, we did see that. I mean, it's, or we saw mom was positive and then dad was positive and then kids were positive. So, you know, we did see that. And now we don't know with the, with the Delta variant, if all of a sudden we are going to see more school spread. And, you know, we'll have to keep an eye on that. But so one of the things that, you know, in this plan has contact tracing going back to the county for them to do their, to do their contact tracing as we look through it. In this plan, we would honor the, the counties, you know, if the county quarantined somebody, we would honor their quarantine. As far as working through this, you know, we want to keep up hand washing, disinfecting, things like that. We know washing hands is just, it's good hygiene procedures. And, you know, it's really helped with our elementary kits, you know, a lot of the procedures that we had in place last year. We know there was a dramatic drop in a lot of the other illnesses that we could fully see during school year. And it's, you know, it had a variety of different things. We're planning on keeping our ventilation running at as much fresh air as our systems can handle. It does, it's a little bit more expensive because you're bringing in more, especially in the winter, you're bringing in a lot more cold air. And so you have to heat that up. But we think that that definitely plays a role in, in keeping kids healthy. And even in the summers, obviously you're bringing in a lot more fresh air and then you have to cool it down. But we're planning on maintaining increased fresh air intake into our buildings. Transportation is a little bit more of a challenge. There is a federal mandate and we are required according to our legal counsel to follow mandates. We don't, we don't have a choice. And the exposure that we have liability wise is not, would not be advised for the board not to follow mandates. And so, you know, right now, the order is on, on our school buses, we have to require masks. That's just, it's, you know, whether people like it, they don't like it, it's out of our hands. It's not the administration, yes or no. Some people will say, well, you know, can you do, you know, civil disobedience and, and things like that? And I would say, we're going to follow the law. And if that's what we're told we have to do, we have to do it. And so, you know, it's, we have that, that piece in there. Our bus disinfecting ventilation will keep those going safely handling that. School meals, the FDA, or I'm sorry, the USDA has made school meals free again this year for all students regardless of need or income levels. And so that will continue as we, as we're through it. Physical distancing, traffic flow, we're going to continue to do our best, you know, physical distancing and traffic flow. I mean, this was one of those things that we, when we opened last year, we couldn't hit, we couldn't, you know, last year it was you have to maintain six feet and we said, we can't do that. We wouldn't be able to open if we had to require six feet. And so we're going to do our best to try to maintain at least three feet, especially in the meal lines and things like that. The Plexiglas as of right now is, has gone away. At lunchtime, we have it in case we need it, you know, if all of a sudden we're seeing an uptick and we're seeing a lot of spread, we can bring it back. But as of right now, the Plexiglas would move away. Moving into staff training, training and expectations, really it's, it's the same things we've been doing all year long. And just them understanding what the expectations are of the district. And then, you know, we have some, what do I do if I get sick at work? And we talked about in our leadership team meetings today, we'll make sure we're conveying the message to our, our staff that, you know, if you that, you know, if you have questions about COVID or COVID related, uh, issues, you know, that you just contact the human resource department, Andrea's department, and she'd be the best person to kind of talk through that, um, with that. We get down into instruction and, uh, the recommendation, and we talked about this, I think the board took action on this this spring, is that instruction is in person. We gave an option for a virtual option, uh, and people had to make that decision by May fifteenth. And people will say, why did you force it so early? Well, we have to hire staff and we have to be able to staff our buildings. We have to be able to build our budgets. And so if all of a sudden we're gonna have three or four hundred students that are gonna choose that virtual option, then we have to be able to staff that virtual option. We had nineteen students, I believe, at this point that chose the virtual option. It's not the same option as it was this, this current year. It is not IDL. It's not zooming into classes. It is purely an online asynchronous for the most part model. If students happen to have to quarantine because they're sick or any other illness, we will, we would handle their instruction the way we handled it pre-COVID, which is they would check in with their teachers, you know, email teachers back and forth, get assignments, things along those lines. But there'd be no more of the zooming into classes expecting teachers to teach both virtually and, uh, face to face at the same time. I think it served our children well last year, but it also about killed their staff. And so, um, you know, I think, you know, we, it, 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 it served its course. And so the recommendation is obviously daily instruction is to be face to face. School visitors and volunteers, we're looking at allowing essential visitors and volunteers in the buildings. So that means we have certain folks that come in and volunteer in classrooms and do some of those things. But still, uh, you know, we would start allowing those back in the buildings. But however, we probably would still not, uh, allow, hey, I just want to come and meet lunch with my kid. You know, we didn't do that all last year. Um, there's a lot of school districts that don't allow that ever. And it's been a practice in Hudson to do that. But at this point, those non-essential volunteers or visitors, we would still say, hey, we, you know, we don't want to bring any more people in than, than we have to bring in, into the buildings. As it relates to special education, you know, I think the thing that, to remember, and it's the same thing through this whole process is, we will continue to provide special education services. And for most of our kids, that's face to face and that's in person. But we do have, you know, some students that may be, you know, compromised and we have to provide those services in a different setting or a different option. But we will meet our obligations, um, and, and our intentions, uh, by the, by the, not just the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law. And I think the next, the next paragraph on this slide is one of the most important, and I think several speakers talked about it tonight, is this social emotional wellbeing of our kids. We know that, um, for some of our kids, they've been out of face to face school for over a year. When we finished the school year in the, in the spring, we had over three hundred students at the high school alone that were still out on IDL. Uh, I would say that the majority of those kids were not out because of health or safety reasons. They started to kind of like the fact they could get up at seven fifteen for maybe a seven twenty-eight class and, and roll out of bed without having a shower or try to, uh, you know, navigate the parking lot in the mornings. And so, uh, but nevertheless, um, you know, there's some social isolation there. And as kids come back into the buildings, we're gonna have to, uh, keep an eye on that. And we talked about it today in our meetings, that we wanted to really make sure that we are, um, keeping a heightened sense of, of what's going on, uh, with our kids and trying to be more proactive and, and keeping an eye on our kids. And not that every person in the school district has to be a mental health professional, that just, that doesn't work. However, we expect all of our employees in the district to be able to identify kids that are in crisis, kids that are in need, and refer them to people that can help them. And, um, and to be able to work, work through that. And that's the different trainings that, that we've gone through. School age care, um, we've been running school age care this summer, uh, as we have in past years. We would continue to run school age care, uh, before and after school care in our elementary buildings, uh, coming up here, um, this fall. Athletics at this time, um, athletics activities would be expected to operate as normal. That would be plays, concerts, uh, athletic events, outdoor events, indoor events. And right now, the recommendation is still mask optional and no limits on, on spectators. So not that those things can't change. But, you know, in talking with our other partners, uh, in the conference and where they're sitting, you know, our plan aligns very closely with what area school districts are doing and what other school districts in our conference are doing. And I kind of jumped ahead a little bit with concerts and large events, uh, no events or no restrictions there. But then, uh, field trips, uh, we're looking at bringing field trips back, um, and, and working through that. Now, again, this is a fluid plan. And the reason I say that is because we do have to be adjustable. You know, last year, if you remember, we adjusted the school closure matrix several times because had we just set it at the beginning of the year and said, we're gonna follow it in stone, there would have been a time when we would have went totally virtual because what was going on in the county was much greater than what was going on in our buildings. And so it is important for us to stay flexible, and I think it's important for us to stay flexible both ways. Sometimes we need to loosen things up and sometimes we need to tighten things up. And it's trying to be, you know, what we think is, is reasonable as we, as we work through this, this process. And the last, last piece is the Community Education and Fitness Center. Again, it's going back to kind of a more business as usual. And again, keeping in mind that, you know, things, things can change and, uh, we may have to be flexible as we move forward. With that being said, I guess I open it up for questions or whatever conversation you'd like to have.
There's questions of Nick.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I don't have a question, um, but I do have a comment. I think, um, I don't think I know many of the folks who were here with us tonight noted that we are not healthcare professionals. And they're right, we're not. So how, when it comes to policy decisions related to health, the health of our students, our staff, and in this case, the health of the community at large, can we not look to those who are healthcare professionals? Those who are experts, healthcare experts for guidance? On each of the slides of our back to school plan, we state that consideration will be given to guidelines from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, St. Craig County Public Health, and the CDC. The recommendation of each of these entities plus the American Academy of Pediatrics, which represents seventy thousand pediatricians, including about fifty thousand board certified pediatricians, is that we should be requiring masks in all of our school buildings. To my knowledge, there's not a single county, state, or national healthcare or public healthcare or public health organization recommending that masks be optional in schools. In our region, many look to the Mayo Clinic as a reliable source for healthcare information. A study they released last week again affirmed that cloth masks work, that when I wear a mask, I protect you, and when you wear a mask, you protect me. When we met two weeks ago, the situation was actually quite different than it is this evening. The Mayo Clinic has a site with maps of every state in the country, county by county. And you can re-watch the seven day average of positive tests change over the last sixty days. The first forty-five days, which would lead up to our last meeting, Wisconsin and Minnesota were both pretty yellow. The changes over the past two weeks, as you watch that slide move day by day, are alarming. Last year, our discussion about whether or not to follow CDC recommendations was about logistics. I remember Nick us talking about the fact that we can't space kids six feet apart, like it's not possible in our space. There's no logistical barrier to following the recommendations of the CDC, the Wisconsin Department of Public Health, the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, and our own county public health department, as well as the AAP around masking. Based on their review of research, these medical experts, the folks that we should look to because we're not medical experts, are recommending universal masking in school settings. If due to the current relatively low, though rising numbers in our county, our board does choose to make masks optional, I would like to see us develop a matrix similar to what we developed at the beginning of last year when we had something relatively new and we didn't know where it would go. So that as we move forward, it's clear to us, clear to parents and other community members, what we are going to base our decisions on. Thank you.
Right. Anyone else have a comment or a motion?
Hi, Mr. President.
Yes.
Something to say. So as I was looking at some of the data that, um, we're talking about the professionals in our community, I looked at the St. Craig County website and I noticed a few things that were discrepancies, in my opinion. It's, it was stating that fifteen percent of our population has COVID from what I could ascertain from this information. And when I go ahead and look at that, there's a hundred thousand people that they're looking at for our population. Eight people have tested positive in the last week. This information was from eight-five. That would be actually point zero 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 eight percent of our population that has COVID. And so I'm a little bit concerned if we're looking at these, this data, if it's correct. Um, and I also note, uh, I actually am a healthcare provider, um, and I'm a mother. And I think that a mother or a father are the people that make the most important choices for their kids. And I don't feel like it's up to me as a school board member to make that decision for parents. If you decide to send your kids to school with a mask, that's fine. But I'm not, as a board member, gonna tell parents that they're, that they have to send their kids to school with a mask. I don't think that's my role. So again, uh, I, I would like to make sure that this information that we're looking at from St. Craig County is correct, when and if we make decisions.
Is your comment done? Okay. And just to piggyback on what you said, Kate, I think, um, a couple of things. Number one, when it said fourteen point eight percent people testing positive, I don't think that means fourteen percent of all people in the county. They mean fourteen percent of the people who are test, being tested are coming up testing positive.
Okay.
And that was one. And then as far as the eight people, that's in a day, I think.
Correct.
That's in one day. So that's new people. And I think the average quarantine is fourteen days. And I don't know what the average length of COVID is. There's, we've got experts here that have had COVID sitting at these tables. I think it's seven to ten days typically, um, before you can test negative. So, um, I think that if there's eight people in a day, then, and it averages seven to ten, that means we're having fifty-six to eighty, roughly people that are having COVID. And this is where to mention Nick's point is, you know, last year we didn't follow, um, the CDC guidelines to a T. Because if we did, uh, we would have gone to, you know, kids going to school every third day or going totally online, which is what most of the state of Minnesota did. And I would argue that the decisions we made put our kids in a better position learning wise today because we kept them in school than what Minnesota did by going off virtual. But anyway, I, I guess I don't want to go down too many of the comments, but I, I think the most important thing is that this is, we're all in this together. We all want to try and do what's best for our kids. I agree that with the speaker who said that everyone who spoke tonight wants to do what's best for our kids. And I think that there is, um, consideration that needs to be made for the mental health aspects all the way around, whether it's wearing a mask or whether it's feeling safe in school. But there's risk in everything we do and we can never eliminate the risk completely. If we wanted to do that, then we'd say, tonight, let's take a vote and go online. And I don't think there's a single board member that wants to go a hundred percent online. We tried mask optional. We took that vote in May, correct? And this is the question that I have, because I'm, I'm always about fairness. And did we take that vote before we had the deadline for people to sign up virtual? It would have been close in timing.
It would have been, it would have been really close, Dave, you remember?
Because, I mean, when we took that vote to go optional, it wasn't necessarily that it was gonna expire. We always said that we were gonna continue to reexamine it. And I would be in favor of doing that because this thing could change. It changed in the last year, and I think the changes that we made were for the good. The, this, the reason that, you know, when we get a motion on the floor, that I would be in favor of the, blueprint, if you will, is that where I would differ maybe with the CDC on some of this. I mean, they are generally the experts. But this whole determination between what is substantial transmission and what is high transmission, I'm looking at the CDC site, and it says total new cases per hundred thousand persons in the past seven days. Substantial is fifty to ninety-nine. That's where St. Craig County is. Now, originally, when the mask, they announced, CDC announced that now even vaccinated people have to, wear a mask in the areas where it was high transmission. And then in a matter of days, all of a sudden they went, well, high, now it's high and substantial. Now, they would have had me if they kept it at high. Because if we're talking about high transmissions and doing something to mitigate, then I probably would be in favor of starting with masks at the beginning of the year. But, um, I, I would say that any decision we make tonight with this blueprint is gonna be subject to seeing how it goes. If we have a huge spike, there's going to be, or ought to be, a reconsideration of where we're at. I don't think we should be setting something for the entire year.
Mr. President, just to clarify, last Thursday, the CDC updated their guidance that regardless of transmission, they're recommending them for all schools, not just high or moderate transmission, but their current guidance is for all schools to require masks.
Mr. President.
I guess it's hard to keep up. Yeah, go ahead.
I think, uh, we voted on May tenth, uh, was when the meeting was held here at Rivercrest. To Heather's point, if we are going to, for transparency sake, develop a, a matrix, I would suggest that it be school by school rather than, uh, district wide. But to the point that, that families had to decide about distance learning on May fifteenth prior to really any knowledge of the Delta variant and how it seems to be so much more transmissible to children and just the, how much more easily it spreads. I, I don't know what can be done in three weeks to increase the IDL. But, um, I think those are very valid concerns that families have for, particularly if they have students that are twelve and under, that, that a vaccine is not yet an option. If, if you're over twelve, uh, and you choose not to vaccinate, that's your choice. But for all of our elementaries and our sixth grade students, they don't have that option.
Any other comments or is there a motion?
Let me comment, Jamie. Um, Mr. President, sorry. I think, you know, the goal last year was to keep schools open safely as best we could. I think we achieved that. I think the community was happy with the results on that. And, and while we did not ignore the science, we had the tools, we used Plexiglas masks, sanitizing, increased airflow. I, I think, um, you know, we did not follow the CDC. Like you said, we were flexible. We did make changes. And, um, I think we should continue to be flexible. I think we should. Yeah, obviously we're doing the sanitation and air sanitizing and the, um, traffic flow and, and the ventilation. I think we should watch those numbers very closely. I'm, I'm not willing to, as you said, Jamie, to guarantee for the year either way. I think we need to continue to be flexible and, um, and watch those numbers. I think the busing concern, obviously, I'm with Nick on that. There's nothing we're going to do about that. I do think it creates confusion for parents. I do also feel, um, that the K through six is that they don't have the choice to have their kids vaccinated. That I understand that concern. But, uh, I think if we watch those numbers very close and, and if the community understands that, um, we're, we will move if we have to on certain things, bringing back the Plexiglas, bringing back masks. The goal is to keep schools open. And if, if that means masks, that means masks. I don't want to get in a position where, you know, we, we don't make changes when necessary if the numbers start going up and the decision is made for us to close our schools down because of infection rates. Thank you.
I just had a question, Nick.
I just had a question, Nick. You had said, how much was the percentage that you were thinking kids were wearing a mask for summer?
Oh, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's anecdotal, but I would I would say it's probably, you know, fewer than five percent of our kids are wearing a mask in summer activities, I think would be that'd be a reasonable assessment.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I am. This is this is this is hard. So when I think about we received a lot of emails leading up to this meeting. I I'm ballpark, I think they were probably about evenly split, which surprised me. You know, and I think both sides, as you alluded to earlier, on the one side, folks are saying, I assume we're going to follow the guidance. And then the other side of folks are saying, I assume you're going to let parents choose. I mean, so very different perspectives on what should guide our decisions. The comments here tonight were not evenly split. I acknowledge that probably about four to one in favor of of optional masks. I do think, I mean, two things that resonated with me tonight, one, we were just speaking about was the fact that parents had to elect online learning before Delta hit. And so that they were in a very different environment from a risk standpoint than they are now. I think the other thing that we didn't necessarily hear comments from tonight, but saw a lot in the emails from folks who were supporting mask mandates was the request that if we're not going to have a mask mandate across the district, could we at least have a mandate? Have masks be required for K five until that vaccine is available for those kids? That's something we haven't talked about, but would be something else to consider acknowledging that while vaccination doesn't completely protect folks, I think it gives a lot of reassurance to people and and parents. You know, and that would be something to consider would be that until we do have a vaccine that's available for the children of those parents that want their children to be vaccinated that we provide or require masks in those K five pre, I guess, pre K, four K, five school settings until there's a chance for those kids to be to be vaccinated.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you. I agree with the commentary or the point that we need to have a matrix. I really think we need to be perhaps even looking down at the classroom level to see what's going on. I think right now it's a crap shoot what's going to happen. There is more than fifty eight percent of our school district residents are vaccinated almost fully. And there's like fifty seven percent have only had the first dose. There's less than four thousand kids from zero to eleven in our school district that have not been vaccinated. So if you take out one, zero, one, two, three, I don't know what numbers we'd get at. I think this is incredibly difficult. I go back and forth all the time in my head. I respect the opinion of people who say it's my child. I make those decisions. But the other hand is we have kids who are vulnerable. Regardless of sometimes we think that kids aren't vulnerable to COVID, they are. In the last year from March twenty twenty to March twenty twenty one in Brazil, over a thousand, I'm sorry, not a thousand, fifteen hundred children under the age of one died of COVID. And that could be relative to other things other than just COVID. Healthcare, quality of life. But while I totally respect parents and their right to do what's best for their child, I feel an enormous responsibility for five thousand plus kids. It's just not my, it's not just my kid. It would be heartbreaking if we went the wrong direction and something terrible happened. The flip side making this difficult is I think we're in an okay place right now. It's not great. But like I said, it's a crap shoot. It could go either way. So I would suggest we do set up the matrix, have some data, revisit this every two weeks and expect that things will change. It's probably not going to stay the same, one way or the other. Thank you.
Any other comments but or motion?
Mr. President, I guess my question of Dr. that would be, I know we talked at a previous session about being very clear about board requests. I I guess if Molly, I would support that being a formal board request that we develop a a matrix. And so I don't know if that's a board motion, Jamie, Nick, or how you'd like that to proceed, but I wouldn't want us to finish this conversation thinking that we hadn't, I would like us to land somewhere. So if we're landing at consensus around, yes, we should have a matrix, then let's land there knowing that when we get together next time, we'll have a draft matrix to look at. So I guess should I make that motion, Jamie? Is that how you'd like us to proceed?
Well, any board members free make the motions that that they want. I guess, yeah, I was looking for some kind of action for us to give direction to the administration, whether that's we're going to adopt the blueprint in total hundred percent tonight, or we're going to ask that this be reexamined at our August thirtieth meeting and that we just kind of keep things where they're at until then. Or we adopt the guideline subject to getting a matrix in place and then reviewing this on at least a monthly basis. I mean, you can word the motion in several different ways.
Thanks. Yep, I know we have the ability to make a motion. I was just wanting to be clear because at our last work session, we were asked to be clear about when we were providing staff guidance. So thank you. Yeah, so that I would move that we that we adopt the the plan with an intention to complement it with a matrix, which we would ask staff to bring to us for review at our next work session.
Do you and I know there's kind of a motion, I'm probably a little bit out of order here, but so August thirtieth is your next work session. That is the night after the first day of school. So the night of the first day of school, I'm sorry. Would there be interest in the board of us meeting a special session prior to the first day of school, like on the twenty fourth? Or is the thirtieth? Are you are you guys good with the thirtieth? In which case, what I understand the motion is mask would be optional as right now, starting the first day of school.
The latter. I don't sense an appetite from the board to make masks mandatory at this point. That said, I think if in the next seven days, for instance, and I just assume this would be the case anyway, if we saw a dramatic change that we would call a special session to review it, but otherwise, no, that was notwithstanding.
Okay, that's what I just want to make. That's why I just want to make sure.
So that was not a well worded motion, but hopefully Tim documented it. And then if someone, if someone else thinks that's a generally good idea or wants to amend the motion to make it a little bit more clear, that would be fine as well.
As I understand it, the motion is to approve the blueprint subject to the matrix being reviewed or being created and reviewed by the board on the thirtieth. Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, I'll give the second to Bob. Now I'll open it up to further comments.
Mr. President.
Yes, Carrie.
I guess I would want the administration to know what the guidelines are for what they'd like on what we'd like on the matrix and what the result would be. I'm assuming we're not going to go into unless I guess we would need to maybe have a hybrid situation with certain level of cases, or I don't think we'd want a remote learning option. So I would guess what we're looking at would be for specific grade levels or buildings. At what point we are talking about a mask mandate or we need to clarify that.
Yeah, I mean, what I what I was hearing you say is the 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 matrix would be as to when we would mask or unmask at the time. Unless the board has an appetite for potentially, you know.
A more complicated matrix, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, it's just it's and then, you know, really, as we as we look at that needing the direction as is it a you know, in the past, you know, we started at the county level numbers, if you remember, our very first school closure matrix. Then over the course of the year, we kind of drilled it down into school level numbers. Is that is that a direction you'd like to see us go? And understand that, you know, again, this will be our our best attempt at it, but it's not as though there is a template that we're going to be able to say, oh, well, here's the here's the template to follow for this school. So you know, it'll be our it'll be our best attempt at it. So I'm just wanting to know, is it school is the is the delineating number most important? Is it district? Is it county? Is it state? How how would you? How would you like?
Mr. President. I would, I would hope we would concentrate on our numbers in our district first like we did previously and give that extra weight for sure.
And to clarify, when you say our district, we we ended with like our actual students and then kind of in the context of our district population at large.
Have flexibility by building. I mean, is that what anybody's thinking as far as had a flare up in one building, would we mandate masks throughout the entire district or?
And I and may maybe looking at, I don't know, it would seem like it would make it easier if there was way to parallel. You know, I don't what what the CDC is using for percentages with red, orange, yellow, you know, maybe it's those same levels so that we're not creating something new, but we're applying those same percentages to our student population, students, staff population and order our community population.
Mr. President. And we would continue the flexibility with those reviews. So if we did go as part of our toolbox or whatever, bring masks back in certain schools for certain hotspots that would review that if those numbers went down to remove mass as well.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just in the interest of being clear for tonight, I feel like there should be a motion to adopt this back to back to school blueprint. And then at our next meeting, review some of what a matrix matrix may look like.
I think that's where that's what the motion is.
It sounded like the motion was to adopt the blueprint with a matrix. And now we're kind of discussing what the matrix may look like.
That's the motion is to adopt the blueprint subject to us getting a recommendation for a matrix and then implementing one.
Okay, but as a board member, I'd like to know what the matrix looks like before I.
Well, yeah, and I don't think we're committed to a matrix, but I think what Nick was asking was what kind of things would you want to see in the matrix so that they have some guidance to know what to develop?
So so you you could split the motion if you wanted to. So you could say, okay, the back to school blueprint as presented, and it's going to be reviewed on the thirtieth, and then you can make your motion of what you would like to see in the matrix. It's going to be reviewed on the thirtieth. Because like I said, at any point, you guys can change it. That's the flexibility of the situation. Because we don't have a matrix to share with you right now. I don't I don't have anything to give you. So you you could do two separate motions, break it apart with a friendly.
And I guess my response would be I wouldn't be comfortable adopting the back to school blueprint without the understanding that we are going to work on a matrix. So to me, adopting the blueprint and committing to look at a matrix that would help guide our decisions moving forward. So it's that's I mean, having both in the same motion.
Okay, and and that makes a lot of sense. And then, you know, your then your second motion would be, these are the, these are the things we want in the matrix, you know. Or here are some of the parameters so that we have that.
There's no specificity for with regard to the matrix in the motion currently. I'm not hearing anyone asking that it be amended. So is there any other questions or comments about this? Yes, I'm supportive of the motion from the standpoint, though, that for it to be successful, it requires a lot of trust. And there was a lot of speakers tonight that asked us to trust parents. We want to be able to trust parents, but it's going to require parents to recognize when their kids have symptoms and don't send their kids to school when they have symptoms. That's going to make the optional mask policy much more successful if we have good adherence to keeping kids home who have symptoms, number one. And number two is if we see a rise in the vaccines, right now, we're running just under fifty percent now of the kids twelve to eighteen. I've seen it go up. That's encouraging. I still wish it was where it, I think it's at eighty percent for people over eighteen. But if we got to that, then we'd have a much, much better chance for this to be a successful policy for the entire year.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Not to imply any distrust of our parents, I would I would suggest, though, that however much they might want to screen, that it is transmissible before symptoms are evident. So it could be totally inadvertently that a child comes to school and and spreads it before the parent then realizes.
That's true. Yeah, I'll give you that.
Not to, not to. I just don't want to put a bad light on our parents. I mean, obviously, if they're they're
And I wasn't intending to put bad light.
No, no, no.
Yeah, pointing out that we're all in this together and it's we don't like to be put in this position, frankly, period, but we are. And so we're trying to make the best policy we can, and it requires a cooperation, just like all of our excellent learning at this school requires teamwork with parents.
Well, Mr. President, I I think it's worth just reiterating that you know, last year at this time, the CDC guidance was around keeping kids home. And I think what we learned from last year is it is best for kids to be in school, period, right? And so we've seen that guidance shift. We've only been talking really about face masks and face coverings, but within those guidelines or those recommendations is really in priority what they would like to see us do. And you just alluded to the most important piece to keeping our kids in school, which is vaccination rates, right? And so I think we were watching those. The second then is the face masks, the distancing. They recommend screening and testing of students and staff. And then what you just alluded to, staying home when you're sick. And so I think to we're only talking about masking, but this strategy, this approach to we want our kids in school and ultimately we want our kids in school without masks. Vaccinations, face masks, distancing, testing and staying home are in order, those top five things, they're going to get us to that point where our kids can be in schools without masks again, which is where all of us want to be.
Any other comments, Bob?
Oh, yeah, I would just say that with understanding to for staff, students, families, respect for people wearing masks or not wearing masks. And there will be no tolerance for that type of bullying either way and be allowed to be in our schools.
Good point. Right? Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, I'll call the question.
I have just one thing to say because I think it's important. We got so many emails from so many people, which I think is great because it shows that parents are really involved in their kids' school. And I just wanted I guess, stress the importance of parents deciding things for their own children, whether it's testing, vaccinating, masking. I want people to know that I value that as a board member and that we are listening to you. And I'll continue to keep that under consideration every two weeks when we're reviewing this.
All right. Any other questions, comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion is approved. Next up on the agenda is the twenty one twenty two certified staff handbook.
Okay, so I know in my absence, Holly Butler presented this to you at the work session, July twenty sixth, so I certainly want to recognize her for doing that. Don't want to go through all the changes because I know she already did that. I just want to highlight the primary substantive change is the layoff language. And we did that after collaboration with Hudson Lead and having conversations with different groups. So both certified and support staff handbooks have modified language for for layoffs. Other than that, it's primarily updating from year to year and some simple reconsiderations. I'm happy to entertain any questions as well.
Is there a motion to approve the certified staff handbook?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion regarding the certified staff handbook, which we discussed at the last work session? Hear none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Next up is the support staff handbook.
Same thing, layoff language. Layoff language with support staff was a little unique in that we actually applied it as well as the we actually applied it as well as the verbal language this past year. And so through the application, we also learned. And so that's one reason why we're proposing the modifications. And we're also doing our best to align whenever possible, whenever reasonable, the certified and the support staff handbooks. So you'll see a little bit of, a little bit more editing in the support staff handbook and to be consistent with those efforts.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the support staff handbook as presented by administration and discussed at the last work session, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The support staff handbook is approved. Next up is proposed substitution pay rates. Andrea.
Okay, I'll just keep going. And again, I know Holly proposed this information at the work session. But to go along with that, we, it is substantially different than what we had this past year. And that we had the $200 for substitute teaching rates. However, it is also higher than the previous year. So we're hopeful that our substitute pools will continue to be adequate going into the 2122 school year. At the same time, we're trying to be proactive in terms of the existing market out there right now. And so our proposal at this time is the 150 for typical substitute teacher positions. And then for Hudson School to six certified staff retirees, it'd be 175 because I'm really passionate about wanting to keep those HSD retirees in our system and not substituting in other districts.
And just to clarify that retiree goes up if there's consecutive, if there are long-term subs basically, right?
Yes, exactly. Yes. Cause that always, and that with our retirees, especially recent retirees, frankly, we often work through different types of hiring arrangements with them to again, recognize their time in the district because they're the best ones that we can then bring back into the classroom because they know what we do and how we do it. And it's a much more effective environment for the, for the kids in those classes.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I was looking through the long-term subs and I saw that Brian Hugheser is coming back and my son and I talked about that. And I said, I hope you have as good a teacher in college as Mr. Hugheser. So awesome work getting him back.
We love having Brian. Yes.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there a motion to approve the long-term sub rate?
Motion to approve?
Or just the substitute teacher rates that includes long-term subs. All right.
Motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
Second by Bob. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. And the motion passes. Last but not least, we have the specified support staff wage rates. Andrea?
Yes. So I appreciate Dr. Let's willingness for me to add this to the agenda relatively late, having not discussed it at the July work session. I think it speaks to the fact of the immediacy, the, the not emergency, but the emergent issue that is now facing us in terms of 55, now I think it's 57 support staff vacancies that we have to hire prior to the start of the school year. Extremely concerned. Some of our candidate pools are zero. Noon duty, we had one candidate, we hired them. It was very competitive amongst the buildings to try to get them. So we have another 16 that we have to fill with respect to noon duty. So what I try to do here is lay out the why, really try to specify why it's important at this time. I think anybody who looks out in the market right now can see for the first time that I can ever remember, there's closed restaurants, there's Starbucks closing, there's all these different service industries that are not able to staff. There's shortages in most markets at this point. We are one of them. It's the most common topic among HR directors in the schools as well. I'm having another meeting with the Bigger Ver Conference on Wednesday. And that's topic number one, two, and three is what are you going to do if you can't staff your buildings with support staff individuals? Trying to be proactive. I know I talked in June briefly about being concerned and wanting to monitor this, wanting to stay on top of it. And we have done that. We've been advertising on indeed, most districts are at this point, we're spending more than we ever have in terms of advertising. We're looking at alternative ways to advertise as well. However, I think ultimately a goal of this recommendation is to increase pay rates of some of our most difficult to fill positions substantially going into the 2122 school year in a way that we haven't necessarily previously. On top of that, looking at the system as a whole, you'll see now we only have two positions. If you look at the larger support staff grid, two positions that are less than $15 an hour. I think the $15 threshold is significant. And I think that this proposal again moves us in a direction where hopefully we're going to be able to have a more effective path to recruitment of new staff in these particular positions. This is not all of our positions by any stretch. What we did was we looked at the comparable data and as established by the board in terms of the comparable school districts and tried to especially look at the contiguous districts to see where are people at? And why can't we recruit in these areas? And that's what led to our, our recommendation here tonight that I've been working with cabinet on. You can see the budgetary impact, the cost impact inclusive of wages and benefits for the, the, these modifications. Quick caveat, just because I know you received a draft of this on Friday. We did add in here the fitness center system as well. That last category, it was only a $3,000 additional expense going from 1423 to $15 an hour. We just had another resignation in that area and, and those are really difficult to fill as well. The last piece we want to implement is a $500 signing bonus, $250 after 30 days, another 250 after 60 days enrollment. That's a relatively small cost when you look at all the efforts being made to try to recruit and find people and get them to apply. We do our best to reach out to staff or to reach out to potential staff and we'll double down on our efforts, but this is, these are some ways that we can increase our chances to be able to again, staff those 57 positions. The last one is something that we're trying to be creative with, with respect to crossing guard and noon duty positions. Rarely do they make it past the first snowstorm. You know, we have a lot of turnover once it starts getting cold. And so I really like the idea of recognizing those staff members who are doing the jobs that most people don't want to do out in the cold, whether it's standing outside at 7:15 in the morning or being outside with the kids every noon recess. Having a thousand dollar recognition, essentially recognition bonus of that work. And it would be prioritized for partial year employment. It would be given to anybody in those positions that does the work for the year. So that's summary of the entire proposal. And again, I appreciate your willingness to consider this kind of without the initial examination at the July 26th work, work session. It's definitely been a challenge to get to this point of, okay, what is the lay of the land? How do we, how do we have the best chance to staff our buildings as we're going into this next year? And trying to be adaptable to the really tough job market that's currently out there.
Mr. President? So Andrea, I fully appreciate and support trying to be creative about how we can get people and keep people. You referred to them as significant increases, which surprised me because my initial thought was, is this really enough to make a difference? You know, I mean, so it's small adjustments to all of these rules and it ends up being a decent chunk of money in, in aggregate. How then do we evaluate whether or not this got the results we wanted? Like, will we look at turnover? Like over the past five years and then look like kind of at the next couple of years going forward? Or how, how do we ultimately assess whether or not this investment was a good one and got, got the results we wanted?
Very good point. And I think it will be a work in progress because our turnover did go down last year with, with respect to support staff and certified staff. However, the job market wasn't as tight as it is now, right? Like it just, within the last 12 to 18 months, it went from not the like special appears are one that I always look at. I mean, we never had plenty of applicants, but we had enough applicants for the most part to fill the positions. We don't now. And so it's such a wildly different job market that's out there that I don't know if this, I mean, we had a lot of conversations. Should it be 17 instead of 16, 75? Especially with special at Paris and then 18 for one-to-one Paris. We try, and $16 an hour for school age care. We're trying to find that balance between, you know, the cost impact. But still being able to get people through the door and recruiting people. So do I know that this will be a silver bullet? No, but I do, I think it's significant to be, have our staff for the most part above $15 an hour. I do think that it is. Because I think especially with special appears at the 1675 and then ramping that up for steps two and step three, too, we kind of kept percolating or we kept extrapolating it out. A real dollars for staff and it balances the, the recruitment efforts, but also retention efforts. We don't want to upset those people, the top end who don't get a corresponding increase as well. Definitely concerned about the budget, knowing that we've implemented layoffs in the last year or two. So trying to find that balance. But we will continue to study to see if it's effective. Hopefully I don't have to come back again. Because we're unable to continue to fill the positions. I'm hopeful that this will give us enough momentum going forward that we're going to be able to staff these positions.
Thank you. That's helpful. And I appreciate that. It's not just about turnover. It's also about applicants. I suppose that's another thing that you, is this new rate enough that we actually now have some applicants to interview because you can't keep someone if you don't attract them in the first place. So thank you. Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve?
I just have a quick question. Are there staff that maybe have been here for a year that may be lower than these rates?
Our budgetary costs here has everybody applied to it. So everybody who currently is in our system, this applies to them moving forward. So it'll benefit everybody within these positions.
Thank you.
And this bonus to stay the entire year for those crossing guard and the jobs that are tough to keep people all year. Like a crossing guard, is that like roughly four hours a day?
Yeah. Two hours a day sometimes. I mean, cause usually about an hour in the morning, we typically, they only work about 45 minutes, but we pay them for an hour. And then at the beginning and end, and oftentimes we do loop that around other types of positions if we can, without hitting 40 hours a week and need overtime. So we try to creatively staff that as well. But it is definitely a time consuming portion of Holly Butler's position is to continuously staff these positions. Especially once that first snowstorm or that cold snap happens. Every year we lose people.
Okay. So is there a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Carrie. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. And I'll now entertain a motion to.
We don't need it.
We don't need it. Nope. All right. So take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All right. Thanks, Bob. All those in favor of adjourning say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.